Good evening, everyone. This is a City of Southfield Regular Meeting of the City Council, December 12th at 6:00 PM. Madam Deputy Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Banks?
Present.
Councilwoman Brightwell? Councilwoman Cruz? I have an excused absence for Councilwoman Frazier and Councilwoman Hoskins. Council President Mandelbaum?
Present.
And Council President Pro Tim Taylor?
Here.
And we have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we have our communications. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the meeting of the city council and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the council. The first speaker who has signed up is Greg Keeler.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here again to urge that you not approve the opening of any recreational marijuana businesses in the City of Southfield. The reasons are as, as I previously stated. My main concern is the negative, possible negative impact that that would have on our youth, our young people. We don't want anything to attract them, or influence them, or in any way draw them to something that'll be, that could be detrimental to them. We want them to do well in the, in school, concentrate on, on their studies and developing their friendships and develop, developing themselves for a meaningful and fruitful life. So, we should do everything we can to make that possible. Now, we talk about Southfield being the All-American City and the family city, and I agree with that. We want to keep it that way. We don't want anybody referring to Southfield as the Marijuana City. Go to Southfield, get all the marijuana you want. I don't, I don't want to hear that said about our city. Another concern is, I would not want to live near a recreational marijuana business. I think most people would not, and I, I don't think we should impose that upon any of our I think it's important that we do everything we can to maintain Southfield as a desirable place to reside. And also, another concern is the likelihood of an increase in crime in the area of the recreational marijuana business. And certainly, we don't want to do anything knowingly that may increase crime in our fine city. So, I urge that we, if it's about finances, or whatever, I urge that we look at other possibilities and that we do not allow recreational marijuana businesses to be open in our fine city. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all we have for communications this evening. Next, we have presentations. Yeah, Councilwoman Taylor? Well, the, the item is the, to accept the resignation of Councilwoman Jason Hoskins, so, yes, if you'd like to make the motion?
I make the motion that this council accepts the resignation letter received from Jason Hoskins with the effective date of December 13th as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to accept the letter of resignation for Councilwoman Jason Hoskins, effective December 13th, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have two appointments. And the first appointment is the appointment of a replacement for Councilwoman Hoskins, Councilwoman Coretta Hope, effective December 14th, 2022. And, council, we wouldn't, um, do, right, we, um, do want to, does Ms. Hope want to come up? And we'll do a swearing in.
Did you all want to take a group picture?
Yeah.
Chair, it would be nice, is her family members present?
Who are the family members that are present?
Yes, so, uh, one of my sisters is here, uh, the others are underway because I didn't notify them until late today, so, I do apologize. Thank you so much. But, I must say, these are the beautiful ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Alpha Roll Omega Detroit, Michigan, and other. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're helping, Kappa?
No.
You're helping, Kappa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a woman's return.
You just got the name, but no, no part.
Ms. Hope?
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
I do. Um, first and foremost, I'd like to give honor and glory to God, who's ahead of my life. Secondly, to my parents, who are no longer here, but who would just be excited to see this, for me to be here, so I know they're watching now, and I appreciate it so very much. Um, I thank each and every one of you, first and foremost, because I've always supported each and every one of you. I'm not here because I think I could do better. I'm here because I can learn from you and continue to do the great works that you've already done, and I just appreciate each of you. Like I said, I've supported all of you for years, and so I'm going to do my best, I'm committed, and I just thank you for the opportunity, and I'm here. You can call me anytime, my family will tell you, I'm up always during the night, just doing something. So, I'm, I'm looking very forward to, to working with you, and I'm just a little bit nervous, I work hard, and I don't like to be the attention of anything, but I'm committed, and I'm looking forward to that day. Thank you again, thank you.
Thank you. Our next appointment is a temporary appointment and swearing in of a city clerk, Allison Bettis.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilwoman Taylor.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the temporary appointment of this Allison Bettis as the Southfield City Clerk.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to appoint temporarily as City Clerk Allison Bettis. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. We'll now ask our deputy clerk to swear you in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the City Charter of the City of Southfield, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office of City Clerk?
I do.
Um, not too much, just, I, um, love public service. Uh, I am a 35-year-old public servant, and I look forward to working with my colleagues and all of my other colleagues, and talk to you soon.
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if we might note, um, Ms. Bettis's experience as a clerk? I don't think that, um, I think the audience might like to know that. Yes, 20 years, correct, in Garden City, um, as clerk treasurer?
Yes, I had the pleasure of serving in the clerk of Garden City for 20 years.
And you joined the City of Southfield as deputy treasurer in what year?
Uh, in 2018, um, as clerk of Southern, Southern Lower, who was appointed, who was a part of the job, but it's been a while.
Well, you're not a stranger to us, so congratulations, Ms. Bettis.
Next, we have two sets of minutes to approve.
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Taylor?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from our regular meeting minutes of September 19th, 2022, and our regular meeting minutes of October 24th, 2022.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 19th, 2022, and the regular meeting minutes of October 24th, 2022. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our public hearing, which is our Sustainable Southfield 2.0 Master Plan.
Good evening. I'm, I'm happy to be here tonight for your consideration of adopting our Sustainable Southfield 2.0 Comprehensive Master Plan dated December 12th, 2022. Just, just a little bit of background, why we do this. The Michigan State Planning Enabling Act requirement that a community review their master plan every five years. Uh, it's also required as part of our Redevelopment Ready Certification, and our zoning ordinance also requires that, um, after adoption, a plan is reviewed every five years with the council authorizing an update, which we began on January 19th, 2021, and we are now at the finish line in December, um, of 2022, to hold our final public hearing and your consideration of adoption. Master Plan process includes an inventory and analysis, we do a windshield survey of all properties in the city, we have extensive public engagement at the beginning, middle, and end of the process, we review trends and best practices, we develop a draft plan, and then we let that draft plan out for a required 63-day public review period, incorporate the comments received, the planning commission has a further review and a public hearing, makes a recommendation to city council. Last week, council reviewed the draft plan, uh, you're holding a public hearing tonight, and hopefully, we will get an adoption. After tonight, we'll finalize, cross the Ts, dot the Is, and we'll distribute the adopted plan and begin implementation immediately. Master Plan components include a background, key recent changes and trends, healthy living considerations, housing and residential character, economic development, existing and future land use plans and maps, sub-area plans, public infrastructure, public facilities and services, and then an implementation schedule. Appendices include work cited on the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, any resolutions or letters received, our 2016 implementation table from our previous master plan, our public engagement summary, and then, uh, the John Gray's Revitalization Plan was a sub-area plan incorporated into the master plan. As required by Redevelopment Ready, there are approximately 113 objectives that we're going to try to implement over the next five years. We include goals, objectives, um, the body that's responsible for achieving those objectives, a timeframe, and then a priority. With that, um, as the council opened up the public hearing, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing's been held, and if you so desire, I shall read the proposed resolution into the record. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open a public hearing for the Sustainable Southfield 2.0 Comprehensive Master Plan for 2023 through 2028. If anyone wishes to comment. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counsel, did you have any other additional questions? Councilwoman Brightwell?
Chair, I'm, um, obviously, I've been impressed with your department since I've been on council. At, at the last meeting, I brought the questioning relative to best practices, and I think what you mentioned needs to be heard by all citizens who are in the audience, and also ones that are, um, listening in electronically. And you indicated that what you were doing is considered to be best practices, and I know we have a couple other things in the city that are considered to be best practices among our peer group of the, of the city, so if you could just re, uh, reiterate what best practices are with respect to what you've done with this sustainable master plan for the benefit of our audience, uh, and also our citizens. Thank you.
So, um, there's many definitions of best practices, but when we're recognized by our peers as, um, being on the forefront for innovative planning, zoning, and placemaking, routinely, we're asked from Oakland County, SEMCOG, Michigan Planning Association, as well as the National Planning Association, to give presentations on the placemaking, art program, non-motorized transit, and some of our innovative zoning. That all reinforces that, as a suburban community, we are, are leading the way on, on innovative zoning, placemaking, and economic development.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, did you have any additional comments?
No, just that we've, um, reviewed this step by step along the way, we had comments last week, um, and, uh, I congratulate not only Terry Crowe, our planning director, but his staff, because this is a monumental amount of work. Um, and, um, you know, congratulations on getting us to this point.
Thank you. And I, I also want to recognize all the departments, uh, key staff members, our boards and commissions, and some of our residents who contributed to the plan, because the plan is only as good as the many eyes and, and time and effort that everyone put in. But with your permission, I'd like to read the resolution for consideration. A resolution to adopt a new master plan for the City of Southfield to replace the existing master plan. Whereas the existing comprehensive master plan for the City of Southfield was adopted on June 20th, 2016 by the City Council, also known as Sustainable Southfield. And whereas at least every five years after adoption of a plan, the council shall review the plan and determine whether to commence the procedure to amend the plan or adopt a new plan. And whereas the preparation of a new comprehensive master plan was required to establish goals and guidelines to facilitate the direction, redevelopment, and growth of the City of Southfield, to address changing demographic and marketing conditions created by the Great Recession, and to reposition the city into the future. Whereas sustainable communities are places that balance their economic assets, natural resources, and social priorities, so that residents' diverse needs can be met now and in the future. These communities prosper by attracting and retaining businesses and people, and offering individuals of all incomes, races, and ethnicities access to the opportunities, services, and amenities they need to thrive. And whereas on January 19th, 2021, the city council authorized the city planner, on behalf of the planning commission, to send the required notice of intent to update the comprehensive master plan in accordance with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, and to initiate the master plan procedure to update the plan in accordance with Section 5.59 of the City Zoning Ordinance. And whereas, over 138 letters were mailed to registered homeowners groups and condominium associations to encourage participation. Further, several public meetings and workshops were held with homeowners groups, civic associations, boards and commissions, public schools, and city staff throughout the process to encourage public input. And whereas, a social media platform, publicinput.com/SustainableSouthfield2026 website was launched on February 1, 2021, for an eight-week public input period to solicit feedback on a variety of topics, which resulted in over 16,400 total responses, 1,150 total comments, and 581 total participants. And whereas in January 20th, 2021, and March 16th, 2022, the planning commission held public workshops and open houses on the preliminary draft master plan to seek additional public comment. Whereas on September 6th, 2022, the city council authorized the planning department, on behalf of the planning commission secretary, to release the draft Sustainable Southfield 2.0 Comprehensive Master Plan 2023 through 2028, for the required 63-day public review period and the requirements of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, 33 of 200, 2008 is amended. And whereas in November 2nd, 2022, the Oakland County Coordinating Zoning Committee held a meeting and by a 2-0 vote endorsed the county's staff review, finding that the city's master plan was not inconsistent with the plan of any of the surrounding communities. And whereas in November 16th, pursuant to the requirements of Article 4 Comprehensive Master Plan, and I'll just summarize here, um, the planning commission forwarded a favorable recommendation to city council by unanimous vote, and whereas on December 12th, pursuant to the requirements of our zoning ordinance, as amended, the Southfield City Council held a public hearing on the proposed Sustainable Southfield 2.0 Master Plan. Now therefore be it resolved that Sustainable Southfield 2.0 Comprehensive Master Plan, MP-08, draft dated December 12th, 2022, be recommended for adoption in accordance with our master plan procedures and the zoning ordinance for the following reasons. Sustainable Southfield is presented by the City of Southfield Planning Department, Planning Commission, and residents, has been thoroughly studied by the Planning Commission at their Planning Commission Study Meetings and Regular Meetings. Sustainable Southfield will serve to guide and coordinate city decisions on new development and redevelopment, will assist in the review of development proposals to confirm they meet the goals and strategies of the plan, and provide a basis for amendments to the zoning ordinance and zoning map. Also, number three, sustainable communities are places that balance their economic assets, natural resources, and social priorities, so that residents' diverse needs can be met now and in the future. These communities prosper by attracting, retaining businesses and people, and offering individuals of all incomes, races, and ethnicities access to opportunities, services, and amenities that they need to strive. Be it further resolved that Resolution Number MP-08 is hereby recommended for adoption.
Thank you. Counsel?
Please, please.
Councilwoman Banks?
Yes, I move that, um, the Sustainable Southfield 2.0 Comprehensive Master Plan 2023 through 2028 be approved as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve MP-08 Sustainable Southfield 2.0 Comprehensive Master Plane, Master Plan 2023 through 2028. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, Mr. Crowe, I just want to, um, thank you and your staff and all the city departments that helped put this plan together. I know it was not easy, and as you went through the dates, you know, this was over a two-year timeframe, so we definitely appreciate your hard work and efforts. Next, we have agenda items for discussion and/or action. The first is our annual adoption of the 2023 Poverty Exemption Guidelines under MCL 211.7U.
Good evening. Before you tonight, I have a resolution to adopt our 2023 Poverty Guidelines in application. PA 390 of 1994 requires a local unit to annually adopt these guidelines in an application. For 2023, the federal poverty income guidelines have been increased by 5%. The city has also been generously adding 20% to these guidelines since 2003. For 2022, the city received a total of 45 applications, and we granted 31 of these. 10 of the applications were new applicants, and 27 of the 31 were senior citizens. The fiscal impact of poverty exemptions is an estimated loss to the city of $43,800 in taxes. I ask you approve these guidelines as proposed, and if you have any questions, I can take those right now.
Counsel, any, any questions?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Cruz?
I move approval of the annual adoption of the 2023 Poverty Exemption Guidelines under MCL 211-7U.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the annual adoption of the 2023 Poverty Exemption Guidelines under MCL 211.7U. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have our budget adjustments.
Good evening, council. Uh, this first one is a request for a budget adjustment to utilize some of the American Rescue Plan funds. Uh, back in August, council approved body worn cameras, fleet cameras, interview room equipment, and tasers, uh, for the police department. At that time, it was administration's intent to use $90,000 of the American Rescue Plan funds for that purchase, specifically for the tasers, uh, and at this time, we urge you... And at this time, we are just asking council to authorize that usage.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
So Austin, did we consider using the drug forfeiture money for this? Was that in the discussion?
That was part of the discussion, and the police department did not want to use drug forfeiture for this. They had other plans for that.
Okay. And I remember that we got the drones and a couple other things that that come for the drug forfeiture. So how much is, and maybe this is, you weren't prepared for this, but how much is left in the drug forfeiture fund right now?
I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
And I don't recall off the top of my head how much is there.
Okay. All right. So with respect to your department and administration, it was okay to to not use drug forfeiture funds for this item?
That is not my call.
Oh, okay.
The answer is yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. I believe in our administration and our finance department, so I believe in you guys. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. President, with this action, the $90,000, and in action, I'll be asking for an amendment of $1,050.32. We've committed 4,499,806.76 of our recovery dollars, just a little over half.
Little less than half.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Banks?
I agree with Councilman Brightwell. Was there a reason why drug forfeiture money could be used for this?
They could, they could be used, but this is, there are other things that drug forfeiture funds could be used for as well, and the department probably has some things that they're looking to achieve that they think the use of the drug forfeiture funds would be a more appropriate use for. And you've got two possible buckets of money, and both can be used. But the drug, preserving some of those drug forfeiture dollars possibly make a better use for a future project.
Can council get a report later on as to how much money is available in the drug forfeiture account?
Of course.
Thank you.
And if Mr. Michaels could speak to how we budget those funds and our historical practice and what we corrected?
Sure. So the drug forfeiture is not actually a fund that we budget the revenue side on. What we do is we take what we've already pulled in because we never know what that's going to be. It is very case dependent, and we come back to council to do a draw on fund balance to authorize any spending out of that account, out of that fund.
If council will recall, in the past, we were budgeting a line item each year, and in some years, the money did not always come in. Now we're taking the approach, we only budget when we know the funds are there. And drug forfeiture funds tend to be a very moving target, and funds come in as cases are closed, and we usually account for that as part of our annual financial report.
Councilman Banks, do you have any further questions?
No, no further questions.
Councilman Brightwell?
No, I just want to go ahead and move that we approve this item. Item B, which is budget adjustment, American Rescue Plan funds for the Axon Enterprise for contract for the body worn camera, encore fleet cameras, tasers, and interview room as presented.
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Taylor, to approve the budget adjustments for using funds from the American Rescue Plan for items previously purchased by the police department. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have year-end actions for fund balance allocations.
That's me again. Counsel, we did go over this in depth at the last meeting, so I will try to keep it brief. I would like to run through it again kind of at a high level, though. So this is part of our annual exercise. When we are finishing up our annual report, we ask council to pass a resolution committing certain sections of fund balance. As a reminder, there are five different areas of fund balance. We have the non-spendable, which includes prepaid, inventory, any land that we might hold. Our restricted, which are restricted by statute, that includes our right-of-way, our Metro Act funds, or our sanitation reserve. We then have our commitments, and those are the commitments of council. We have our assignations, our assigned amounts. Typically, what we see there is the encumbrances or the amounts approved from one year that will carry over into the next. And then our bottom line is the unassigned. That is what falls through. And that unassigned is what council adopted a policy on to keep at 20% of the subsequent years budgeted expenditures within the general fund, and we've been able to maintain that for the past several years. What I've prepared for you is a comparison of the prior year to the current year and the change, and the commitments are really what we're focused on here. And one of the changes that we made was to the second to last line there, the tax base initiatives. We also added an quality of life. So we've got that amount reserved for the council goals that were voiced at the last meeting and will ultimately be finalized. The unassigned fund balance that we're projecting this year is about 21%. So that does give us a little bit of wiggle room above that 20% threshold per hour policy. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm in motion that we approve the 2021, 2022 year-end actions, fund balance allocations as presented.
Support.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the 2021, 2022 year-end actions, fund balance allocations. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Austin, I'm sorry. Mr. President, I have to ask you a quick question. This might sound stupid, but when you say commitments, does that just mean like contracts we're in that go over multiple years?
No, the commitments are actually just the class, the category that Gatsby came up with for the name. Essentially, it's what council has decided to reserve those monies for. It is not a spending plan. It is not a budget. Any of the funds to be used from there have to come back for council for approval, and council can change those balances at any time.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have item D, approval of an agreement for roadway and interchange reconstruction of Telegraph Road from Eight Mile to Link Road.
The Michigan Department of Transportation has presented us with a cost share agreement for the reconstruction of Telegraph Road from Eight Mile to Link, which is just that first long block north of Eight Mile Road. The majority of this work is to reconfigure that interchange of Telegraph and Eight Mile. The item that's up on the TVs here is just showing what the configuration, how that interchange looks today. And after the diverging diamond interchange is installed, that's how it will function. I'm going to show a short video in a moment. Let me just review the fiscal impact for this. So the estimated construction within the city of Southfield limits is $8,336,900. The majority of that is paid by federal aid going directly through MDOT. MDOT, of course, also has a large share. Southfield's share, including some contingencies, is $208,010, and this is budgeted in our major street fund for this year.
This was an opportunity to alleviate traffic congestion and improve safety by incorporating a new design known as a diverging diamond interchange, or DDI. Traffic is now funneled to the left side of the road all the way across the bridge, so it won't have to wait to turn left onto the highway. With the DDI, there's only 14 conflict points versus 26 from a traditional interchange. This DDI may look confusing from above, but once you drive it, you'll see not only how easy it is to maneuver, but how much safer it is, too.
diamond interchanges as part of that project at 12 Mile Road, at 14 Mile Road, at Big Beaver. When you're driving the mile roads, you're driving through that diverging diamond style interchange. So safety, of course, being the primary motivator, and it just helps the mobility of traffic, prevents those left turn movements, having to cross traffic. That's when you really see the biggest safety improvements there. The other part of the project, just there's so much work going on at that intersection. Southfield has a 16-inch water main that is going to have to be relocated. It's in conflict with some of the proposed dorm sewer work that MDOT is proposing, and that's all going to be done under this MDOT contract. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just want to say that it does look confusing, and the first time I drove it at Oakland Mall at 14 Mile Road, I thought I'm going the wrong way because you actually cut across traffic. But it is, it's really a great improvement. So I think that, like roundabouts, where we had a lot of angst from folks about installing roundabouts in the city, once you experience it, it become, you know, it makes sense.
Right.
But the first time is honestly a little unsettling.
Yeah, it's putting you on the left side of the road for a short stretch as it crosses. There are traffic signals that get installed with this, so it's not a free for all, you know? So the lights were telling you when to stop, and that's when the cross traffic moves. So it's, I feel like the learning curve for the diverging diamonds is very short. It's just more of a comfort level. I feel like the roundabouts take a little bit longer. That's something that's very new to people in understanding when to yield and when you have the right of way. These diverging diamonds, I think just after a few drives through the intersection, it will become very intuitive.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
I mentioned this before, I've experienced one at 14 Mile and Big Beaver, and I mentioned the fact that a couple years ago, I got the opportunity to look at a video of the divergent dam in Atlanta, and it was colorful, and it was a video. It was the most confusing thing I ever seen in my life, and I shared it with a couple friends in Atlanta, and they were aware of it, but they said this is another reason they will not visit that area. But anyway, I am all for this. I think it's, it's, it may look confusing, but obviously, like you say, it's just a functional, just getting used to it. But this is a question that, who is the, I know the roundabouts came from Europe. I know historically, they were in Europe forever. Who is the big traffic engineer in the sky who came up with this? Do you know where this came from? What was the genesis for this?
I'm not sure where they started. I know the first one in Michigan was at University Drive and I-75 up in Auburn Hills. So that went in several years ago. MDOT has been very happy with them, and predominantly, you see them at freeway interchanges. Certainly Eight Mile and Telegraph, neither of those are freeways, but the way that interchange functions with the multiple levels, it functions like a freeway interchange. So they're moving forward with this as long as there's not land restrictions that prohibits it. This is probably what you'll see at most interchanges moving forward when MDOT is totally rebuilding.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counsel? Councilman Banks?
Thank you. I think this is going to be a great improvement to the Eight Mile Telegraph intersection area. You had mentioned one of the main reasons for doing this is also safety. Last week, driving from the airport back to Southfield along Telegraph Road, I noticed every single city, every single mile up to Eight Mile was lit on the side of Telegraph Road. Once we hit Southfield, it was extremely dark. In fact, it's dark from Eight Mile and Telegraph all the way to, I believe it's Civic Center Drive. Now with this project, will they also be installing lights? I noticed that in Southfield, like at Nine Mile and Telegraph, 10 Mile and Telegraph, those intersections were lit up, but we are the only community that from Eight Mile to Civic Center, it's dark. And I know at one time, there were lights there, and it seems like on the Detroit side, between Seven and Eight Mile, MDOT has installed, I don't know if they're solar lights or what, but they're, it doesn't look like it's on special poles, and some of them are even in the medium. It's like, what happened to Southfield? You know, we talk about safety. There's a lot of development in this area, and I just think from a safety point of view, like this should be part of this project, especially since it's going to be this new divergent plan. But we also need to extend it further. So I know that this is, you know, I'm talking two different subjects, but I mean, it was a perfect opportunity to bring up the streetlights, and, you know, I don't know if council agrees, but I welcome you to drive that area at night. And I just, we used to have lights there, and I don't know what the Telegraph Road improvement years ago, if somehow they disappeared? I mean, I was even, someone said, well, Eight Mile doesn't have it. We drove Eight Mile the other day at nighttime. The Detroit side's lit up, so at least the Southfield side is lit up, but I don't understand why that little section. And like you said, with all the development going on there, it just...
Streetlights, MDOT only lights their freeways. So these routes, these US routes are not considered freeways, these surface roads. MDOT does not provide the lighting. So if the city wanted to light Telegraph Road or Eight Mile, that would be upon us to do that. Typically, the, the streetlights that we have that are existing along Telegraph, Southfield pays for those, but they're controlled by DTE. So if there's street lighting outages, we would need to report that to DTE for the maintenance. But if there just are the absence of streetlights, that's because we haven't installed any there.
Through the chair, I'm almost positive there used to be lights, at least from Eight to 10 Mile. And I don't know what happened. I don't know if we can research if there were ever lights, and if not, can we consider putting lights there? I mean, like I said, every single community, actually from 75 and Telegraph all the way to Eight Mile in Southfield is lit up. And a lot of it's brand new. In fact, some of it, they're on the old wood poles that are kind of tilting, and you see the silver arm, and I don't know what you call the... to 8 Mile and Southfield is lit up. And a lot of it's brand-new. In fact, some of it, they're on the old wood poles that are kind of tilting, and you see the silver arm, and I don't know what you call the lights if they're, but they look new, but one's on top, not on the butt.
Right. That's something we can look into.
Again, I'm looking at it, safety from 8 Mile to Civic Center Drive, there were lights there at one time, I don't know what happened to them.
The actual intersection did have streetlights. There might be a couple left right at 8 Mile and Telegraph. Those were city-owned streetlights that just, you know, we don't have a streetlight division, so the majority of the streetlights in the city are all operated and maintained by DTE. DTE owns them. So we paid to have them installed, and then we pay the DTE bills for them to maintain them. The streetlights that were at that intersection, little by little, have been hit by cars, knocked down, and have not been replaced. So that's, and then knowing this project was coming, there was a big push to try and get MDOT to install lights, at least at the interchange. And, you know, the answer was no, because it wasn't a freeway, and I really pressed because I feel that that intersection, it operates as an interchange, similar to a freeway. I felt like at a minimum, that MDOT should be lighting that interchange, but I didn't get any ground. I made my case as strongly as I could, and at that time, the answer has been consistently no.
So you're saying at this new interchange, we are not going to have the new lights?
There will be no streetlights, on our side, anyway.
I guess through the chair, I'd like to know why every other community can have, and, again, at the intersection, 10 Mile and Telegraph, 9 Mile and Telegraph, yes, there are lights. Why there wouldn't be one at 8 Mile and Telegraph, especially since they're redoing this area, is beyond me, but it's in-between, like from 8 to 9. The only lights that are there are from the businesses. Actually, drive 9 to 10, it's, it's dark.
Yeah.
And we can ask the city administration to look into it. This project is not scheduled to occur until 2024, so it still gives us time to research at least this intersection.
If I may, Mr. President, it was mentioned several times, we've done an extensive amount of work on street lighting. Deputy Administrator McReena, City Assessor, have worked on this along with engineering and GIS. I will, a lot of this simply comes down to funding. There is a very different lighting standard in Oakland County versus what you see in Wayne County, and much of it goes back to ages of the community, the earlier development patterns. Ms. Freeman and I, in another life, worked for 10, 10-plus years on what was called Telegraph Tomorrow, and street lighting was part of that. I know in three of those communities, actually, four, five of the communities, there were substantial lighting upgrades made. But this simply comes down to funding. The street, the lighting pattern in Southfield is very different on the east side versus the west side. All of our lighting is done by special assessment, meaning we charge those front, that front to our property owners. I would also state that as we, as we're hearing, Act 51 is supposed to go through a reform. Street lighting, intensity of land use pattern, traffic volume, all should be drivers as to where lights in intersections are lit. It does make sense for intersections to be lit. As Ms. Schultz has indicated, I believe there were five or six lights at the intersection of 8 Mile and Telegraph, and then they dropped off, and we can, we have a history of DTE's records, where the poles physically were, who was responsible for those payments. This has been a large exercise. For the city, it's, it's the initial capital cost, and this, this was one of the items that the administration did mention during our recent goal-setting session, how we cover those capital costs. Some of you may recall, oh, about five years ago, the DDA was looking at, at streetlight improvements. There where the, the land use is more dense, more intense, it came up. And again, it comes down to who pays for the additional capital cost, and we could roll that in by an SAD. Whenever S, whenever street lighting is want, is desired, it's up to the requesting parties to go through by city charter, a petition process. It's a charter, not ordinance, correct? Or, it's a charter or ordinance, let me leave it. So we're happy to, as I had indicated, it's probably about an hour and a half session with council, and we'd like to have that happen sooner than later. And when we, the fund balance allocations, when you talk tax-based initiatives/quality of life, this is one of those things that could be. We typically have not used our general fund dollars for activities like roads and street dollars, but we may need to change that. The things that were discussed in our session were street lighting, fences, that we may need to rethink about how we pay for those things historically. I've pointed out on numerous occasions, when the tax base dropped from roughly $3.6 billion to 2, 2.250 million, or a billion-dollar decrease, you've had a million dollars less a year to work in that, what we call, the appearance millage. So over 12 years, you've had $12 million less to work with. That was money historically used for roadside cleanup, making these types of capital repairs, paying for things like fence repairs in certain, along certain corridors. It's the reality where we're at. I cannot stress enough that we have a strong position on Act 51 reform. We were originally promised this reform back in the late 80s, and in my career, I've yet to see it happen, but the realignment of the political structure in Michigan probably presents one of the best opportunities.
I guess I would like to see it again, I, I mean, I would like to have a discussion, you know, at a future meeting, and I'm not looking for an answer right now, but I don't know if we can use American Rescue money for something like this. We talk about quality of life for the people in our city, but we don't have proper lighting. People are complaining because along some of the roads, the lights are out, and we've been told, "We can't fix the lights because they no longer make the parts," but we need to find out what to do. Tonight, we just approved the Sustainable Plan from the Planning Department. He has spent, we've spent, what, three to four years on this plan, and even in that plan, they talked about walkable community, riding your bicycle. No one's going to do that in the dark. They need a little bit of light.
There is a mechanism for street lighting.
I'm sorry?
There is a mechanism for street lighting. Requesting parties need to bring it forward, and we pass those charges along.
But I thought that was within the subdivisions, not on Telegraph Road, 9 Mile Road, 10 Mile Road.
We can do, we can do it along those roads as well. But it comes down to the intensity of the street lighting, where we, what people want.
All right, we can, we can definitely bring it back for, for further discussion. I do know, a couple of years ago, there was, I think there was a streetlight that was requested off of Greenfield Road, and it was done through a special assessment as well. So I do, you know, obviously Telegraph is a bigger stretch, but I'm sure we can...
And keep in mind, it's not just the initial capital cost, it's the ongoing operational cost.
Correct. So, Councilman Taylor?
I was just going to say, I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Banks, I'd like for us to have the discussion, because of our, is there any way, too, that we could get metro funds, the metro funds for lighting, street lighting?
Well, it's a pretty extensive, because we can literally bring up the screen, drive any corridor, point and click as to who's responsible for what light. The same thing in subdivisions and along corridors.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counsel? But it definitely sounds like the council would like to have that discussion at a future meeting. So, okay. We are looking for a motion for this project.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for us to approve, for the approval of the agreement for the roadway interchangeable reconstruction on Telegraph Road as presented here tonight.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of the agreement for roadway interchange, reconstruction of Telegraph Road from 8 Mile to Link Road, job number 2069 MDOT, and it's MDOT job number 132102, contract number 20-5446. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I, Mrs. Owen, this is a very good case of why we should institutionalize that council budget meeting that we had last Wednesday on the 7th. That kind of issue is why I want to have that budget meeting with council, and we can just put all of these things forward before they get to this setting. And so I, just with the council approval, we would just institutionalize that budget meeting that we had last, the 4th, the 7th.
And we did, we did schedule one for next, for Jan, for January 24.
And I, I mean, I mean, institutionalize it for every year in December, right around that time, because you get ahead of the budget process, and you do it in December. By the time January rolled around, the budget process is rolling along. That, that was why we did it, so we could put council ideas and suggestions in there for...
And it was built into the schedule for next year.
Okay, for December.
December, it was either December or January, but one of those before the entire budget gets, gets solidified.
And December of every year is a good year. That's why I would like to see it institutionalized, because they wanted to push it back to May, but December is, is the time to get, for the council to get into the ground floor of the budgeting process.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Owen, is that, that pretty much was the rationale?
The, the answer is yes, and going through council priorities, as we put together our budget, the administration and staff will look for ways to fund those priorities. And, you know, whether it's our legislative agenda or ask, I mean, we know the Michigan legislature is going to be going through some very unique allocation of money, and when we can better, best align council's goals with funding opportunities, and that's what we try to do with the recovery dollars. Position ourselves to know where future funding, the conversation about American recovery dollars and street lighting, at the same time that the government, that our federal government is dealing with energy management as well as infrastructure, the general consensus when the recovery was, was passed, was wait to see what we do with the infrastructure bill. We all know that we didn't get everything what they wanted in the infrastructure bill or the energy bill, but things are still playing out at the federal level. The balance of power there between the House, one party, the Senate, we might be able to see some things that they couldn't get through in, in energy. One of the best things on energy, everything that Mr. McReena, our assessor, GIS did, was moving that lighting system to LED, more energy efficient, and the, our recommendation may come back to you and use some general fund dollars, because our road dollars are just too limited. I mean, I, I, we, we know we need to be spending $6 to $7 million a year for roads, and what we've seen in our road fund balance is we've got about two years' worth of funding to work, so we need to continue to secure more road dollars.
Sure. The, the main, I just want to reiterate the fact, December is the time when council can really get in the, on the ground floor of the budget, and we put these kind of items, put them forward. Bow Lake, when we did this, this meeting, want to make sure their remote meter reading was included this year, and it is, but this is, that, that December 7th meeting was the purpose of putting these kind of things forward before they get to this particular body. So that's the only thing I'm saying.
Before we start the budget process and that fund balance allocation, the two aligning, because with fund balance allocation, we could then turn to staff and say, "Let's budget part of that early in '23, so we can move these projects forward during the construction season." Otherwise, if, if we do it and the budget is adopted the third week of June, staff isn't able to do any of those projects in '24.
Sure.
So part of this exercise, what we went through last week, was to determine how will you, what we'd like to use those funds for.
Sure.
We still need to take them through the budget process.
Right.
And as Mr. Michael stated earlier, those fund balance allocations, you have an on-designated balance as well as a designated balance, they can be realigned as we go through this process. I like the idea of looking at the street lighting very early on, because setting that up, that, that timeline with DTE is very extensive. Our own process on the SAD is about, it's a five, five meetings, five public hearings? That's a process in itself that will take time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
At our budget, first budget session last Wednesday, streetlights was put on the list, I put it on the list, and I'm, so I'm glad that we're having this conversation this evening, because I think it highlights the need. I have been, one of my concerns is there are five or six light poles that either rotted or were hit by an automobile on Southfield Road when you leave the Southfield Freeway on your way to Mount Vernon and just beyond, below 10 Mile. As far as Civic Center Drive, we're waiting on a proposal from DTE to replace those lights as what's there now, not very bright, and they're antiquated. They were decorative lights, so that's, that's been something we've been waiting on, and I know there've been discussions with DTE about, about that. But I think we, we need, and I also hear from residents that live in neighborhoods with no sidewalks, and as you say, Ms. Banks, we're encouraging people to walk, and we're doing things to make Southfield a more walkable city. Well, certainly adequate lighting is part of that. So I'm glad, glad this discussion happened, because, you know, it's something I hear about all the time. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you. All right. Next, we have the authorization to purchase dump trucks for streets, highways, and water divisions.
Yes, I'm here before council for the recommendation and the request by the Motor Pool Division for the purchase of two dump trucks, one to be used for the street and highway division that has an age of 19 years. It currently has a mileage of 55,000, but an equivalent miles and hours of 220, or, sorry, 229,000 miles. It's reached its normal expected life. The second truck will be used for water as a supplemental truck. Each truck will cost approximately $120,904 for a total of $241,808. They then will be fitted with dump bodies. The trucks are freight liners, purchased under the Rochester Cooperative Agreement from Eastside Inc., and the dump bodies will be purchased from Howell, Michigan at a cost of $256,420. Due to the extremely turbulent nature of construction, these trucks, if we order them today, we are slotted to receive them from 18 months to two years, so we will not realize these trucks until two budget seasons from now. If we do not order them now, we're talking an additional two years, so we would be four years out. We asked the city council for approval of these trucks, and I can answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
So we, we will pre-ordering these, so is final payment made once we receive them? Do we have to put down a deposit or something to get the ball to rolling?
We are, with this agreement, will be establishing our allocation, and final payment will be upon delivery of the truck. So no, no outlay will occur, to my knowledge, until that time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Taylor?
I'd like to move that we do the authorization to purchase dump trucks for streets and highways and the water. streets and highways and the water division as presented here tonight.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the authorization to purchase dump trucks for streets and highways and water division. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Next, we have the proposed lease of the Simmons House at two-six-zero-two-two Berg Road.
Good evening, council. For the past two years, Congresswoman Lawrence has rented the Simmons House as a local office through behind-the-scenes arranging of our mayor. Councilwoman Tlaib has agreed to continue renting the rental of the house for the two years of her term. We're proposing to rent this for the same cost of nine hundred dollars per month.
Nothing's changing.
Nothing is changing.
Except the name on the door.
Correct.
All right, council? Councilman Brightwell?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the proposed lease of Simmons House at two-six-zero-two-two Berg Road as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the proposed lease of the Simmons House at two-six-zero-two-two Berg Road. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the bids for on-call electrical services.
Good evening. Again, this is one more of the skilled trades that we maintain a permanent contract for. In this instance, we submitted for bids via the Michigan International Gov-, Government Trade Network, MITN. We received six responses from qualified electrical firms. We are recommending approving the lowest three according to their regular cost for work. They will be used as is most economical for the work they are best suited to perform.
Okay. Council, any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
John, do we have, uh, uh, anybody on staff to do minor things without going out for a, a contractor? Do we have someone kind of familiar with electrical work?
We would not be permitted to have a handy person do any electrical work. That would be illegal. We do have a carpenter normally on staff. That position is open right now. We also have a HVAC mechanical employee on staff who does the basic maintenance, belts and filters mostly. But that's the extent of our staff in that regard, sir.
Okay, I missed that. You said we're, it's not illegal for us to have an electrical, uh, person on staff?
We, we can't have a handy person, no, sir. We could have an electrician, but that would exceed what, the reason why we did not hire another electrician once our last one retired was that we found it was cheaper and more effective to simply call in an electrician when we needed one.
Okay, all right. A, a general caution?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I move that we approve the bids for on-call electrical service for the facilities maintenance department, um, as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the bids for on-call electrical services for the facilities maintenance department. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you. Next, we have an authorization to host a reception during the Detroit Regional Chamber's twenty-three Mackinac Policy Conference.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Honorable Board. The Mackinac Policy Conference is Detroit Regional Chamber's signature event and its premier public policy event. This has been taking place since nineteen eighty-one. For several years dating back to two thousand and six, the city of Southfield had a small event off of the main Grand Hotel. And we're looking to bring back our reception, um, but in a much grander way. Um, we contacted Lawrence Technological University with their new president. They're looking to cosponsor the event with us. And after speaking with the Detroit Chamber, we've discussed that, um, they would allow us to be part of their policy conference. We would have to, um, take a sponsorship which would enable us to have an event at the Grand Hotel during one of their scheduled break lunches. So we're proposing that, um, the conference this year is May thirtieth through June second, that we take one of the lunch slots and host our, uh, lunch reception cosponsored with Lawrence Tech. The other situation is that the, um, the sponsorship, you can only put one name on as the sponsor. And, um, to go along with our town gown relationship, we thought that it would be most appropriate if we went under the Southfield City Center title so that we could both share in that sponsorship. This, um, would enable us to have an invitation and all the bags as the guests come to the island. Um, so it would be, um, all of the attendees would be welcome to attend. And it would give us much greater visibility and really showcase that we're open for business and that, um, with Lawrence Tech, that we have a strong presence in this region. So, um, the event, the initial sponsorship is twelve thousand dollars. We anticipate the cost of the lunch to be about fifteen thousand dollars. Again, the university will split the total cost with us. And we would, um, look for support from some of our, um, stakeholders in the area to help underwrite the cost of the lunch. We have reached out to several businesses and we feel that it's likely that we could garnish some support for the event. So, um, we are looking for authorization to, um, secure this sponsorship. And again, the city's, um, value would be thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars, and it would be coming out of, um, my Business and Economic Development Fund.
Counsel, any, any questions? You have a question? Yes, go ahead.
I'm supportive of this. But my curiosity gets to me, uh, do we have our peer group, um, Southfield City Peer Group, are, are they doing something similar or have they done something similar historically? Or are we just branching out, showing our, our readiness to, we open for business?
When you say our peer group, are you talking about other communities that are in the area?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Like the city of Troy or Farmington Hills?
Yeah, Troy, Farmington Hills, Berkeley, anywhere around?
Traditionally, they have not held events. Um, after going to the Detroit Chambers event for many years, there is a significant amount of Southfield business leaders that are in attendance. Um, I, I don't know that it's the same with some of the other communities. I know one of our partners, Automation Alley, from time to time have had events at, um, the conference, but I, I don't believe that any of the cities have had anything like that. So we would be, you know, being out there and on the forefront, saying we're open for business, come back to work, come back and see all the wonderful things that we've instituted. With the new president of the university, they're really wanting to market L T U and showcase many of the new programs that they've announced. We can share that, the outstanding news of Centropolis. And then again, all the efforts that city council has made to make this a more walkable environment, we'd be showcasing all of that. Uh, we would have our Chamber of Commerce present, so again, to show how welcoming we are, you know, to the large and small businesses.
Okay, all right. That's got enough reason.
Okay, I did have a, um, another question.
Sure.
The money that we're authorizing, obviously it won't be used all if we receive additional help from some of our more, you know, corporate entities within that, the, the city. Is that correct?
That's correct. My budget has, um, funds to go out and to, to help market the city. And so I go to different site selector events or different programs. Um, and so this would be dovetailed into that and, you know, I would curtail other things that I might be doing to help focus the dollars towards this. So it, it's all in the same vein of, of what I do.
Okay. And I, I do see we have a representative from L T U.
Right.
Did you have anything to add?
I would just say that we're really looking forward to this after several years of not having, uh, join.
Come on up.
This is Mark Broke. He's, um, in charge of advancement at the university.
Thank you, Shelley. Yeah, so after many years of, of really not having, um, a presence at Mackinac because of, of COVID, um, we are really looking forward to rejoining, uh, and, and, and doing this in conjunction with, for years dating back to our solar decathlon days, uh, in, in the early two thousands, we had, uh, a joint sponsorship and joint workings with the, with the city to, to showcase the town gown relationship. Um, and so we're very excited about being able to bring that back. Dr. Sop is, uh, is thrilled. Uh, it was his first Mackinac Policy Conference last year. Uh, just, it was incredible, uh, uh, results as far as contacts and, and, and community outreach, and he, he just shows a lot of value. So when, um, we were talking about how to sort of step up our presence, uh, it's a, it's a natural fit. Uh, it, it'll, it, um, in a comparison with other, um, entities, it really helps us shine, um, the, both the university and the city. There's really not any other partnership that shows both the city and a university like this. So when we talk about Farmington Hills or Troy, there is no other co-entity like this between the city and a university that, um, uh, is really on display like, like we are. And having, um, you know, the encouragement of being able to, uh, bring more businesses back to the community, um, is really, really important, uh, overall for, um, our, our students, for our faculty, for the overall community. And like Shelley was saying, um, if you look at the amount of businesses like the, uh, our Fortune five hundred companies that are all here, they have a very good representation there. So our outreach to them, um, is very encouraging.
I, I would just like to add, because we have to, um, select a sponsorship, there's limited opportunities. Last year, I think a lot of people were invigorated by coming back to the event, and the slots are very, they're going quickly. That's why we're coming, you know, at this meeting. Um, the, we are looking for the twelve thousand dollars, it was the entry-level, um, sponsorship, but it, it gives us the ability to be the sponsor at the opening dinner at the stables, which is always a real nice event. So we will be one of five that will be highlighted at that event. And then, as I mentioned, we'll have our invitation and all of the gift bags. And so they will be promoting the city and Lawrence Tech through the city center name during the conference. Um, that also entitles us to one of the rooms, we'd still have to pay for the room at the conference. And we are looking to do, um, a marketing campaign leading up to the event, um, with their magazine, The Detroit-er. So we'll be, um, able to get another room, hopefully for somebody else. One would go to the university and one would go to one of the city council members or the mayor, whoever decided to take that slot at the Grand Hotel. So it's, it's very challenging to get into that, um, location, so that opens the door for that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
We're also looking for, um, local businesses to help sponsor this. I think that...
Correct.
That's important to, to stress that. Certainly feel that this is a good opportunity for us, given our business presence, uh, in this city. Thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
I'm in favor of this. This is a great idea. I, in my former working life, I've had to, uh, put together several of these. And the company, you have a captured audience where you can actually display what Southfield is all about. All the companies and with, um, technology, Centropolis with the tech corner, uh, we have the, the hospitals, we have so many things to offer. This is a, we have a captured audience to do that. So I'm in favor of us doing this at this time and especially at the Mackinac Policy Conference. That's a great, great thing.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yep. Shelley, can you run the numbers back to really again about?
Sure.
Because I, I thought I heard you give us two figures.
So in order to have an event at the Grand Hotel, an organization has to be a sponsor of the policy conference. And so there's a variety of packages that you could select. The baseline package is twelve thousand dollars. So by us participating as a twelve thousand dollar sponsor, it enl-, it allows us to have an event at the Grand Hotel during their program. So we would take a lunch slot during the event, and we're looking to have it at the pool. They redid a room at the pool. And so we have to, we don't have to pay for the cost of the room, but we would have to pay for the food and, um, beer and wine. It's a, it's a very festive conference. Um, the university has stated that they would pay for the, the alcohol because the city does not pay for alcohol. But, so we would split the entire cost. We anticipate the food and drink at the event would be about fifteen thousand dollars. So the total cost with the sponsorship and the food is twenty-seven, and so the half of that, thirteen fifty, thirteen five for us, the other would be through the university. And again, any dollars that we can get to help underwrite anything, we'll just take it out of our shared cost.
My math's still rusty, but, haha, just want to make sure.
Twenty-seven and a half.
But no, I think, I think, I think, like everyone else, it sounds like a very great idea, so, and we appreciate you, Lawrence Tech, coming, uh, to partner with us on this. So I think it's going to be a good look for the city of Southfield and, and L T U, of course, just what's going on in this area.
If anyone would like to come, um, the rooms are not opened yet, um, but we know that Mission Point, which is a beautiful complex, it's a little far from everything, but they are taking reservations right now. And we have secured a couple of rooms, but please email me if, if this were to go through and if you're interested in staying at that facility, we can get, you know, to make sure that we notify whoever's making reservations to get them in early.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilwoman Taylor?
I'd like to make a motion or move that we approve the authorization for the hosting of the reception during the Detroit Regional Chamber's twenty-twenty-three Mackinac Policy Conference as presented here tonight.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the authorization to host a reception during the Detroit Regional Chamber's twenty-twenty-three Mackinac Policy Conference from Tuesday, May thirtieth through Friday, June second, twenty-twenty-three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the sale of city-owned properties to the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation.
Thank you, Mr. President. As discussed at our, our recent budget, uh, session, uh, near the end of the meeting, I had indicated that, uh, on Thursday, uh, m- morning, I had a conversation coming up with, uh, MISTDA. And the Southfield Nonprofit, as, uh, evidenced by the maps that I had sent out and that were part of the package, we've been, uh, working with the city since the mid-nineties to acquire, uh, parcels along Hooper Street and Simmons Street. This evening, I'm requesting that the city authorize the sale of eight parcels, uh, described in, in my communication, totaling four point four-two acres to the Southfield Nonprofit Housing, uh, Corporation. The, um, sale, proposed sale price after discussion with the city assessor is fifty-five thousand per acre. The property is owned residential. Any development on this site would come back to council, uh, for the appropriate planning and zoning, uh, use. But this will allow the Southfield Nonprofit to pursue a possible joint venture for an additional, uh, development on this site. Uh, if you recall back in two thousand and fourteen, city council approved the Valley Woods, uh, rest, uh, development plan, and that, uh, developed some con-, some concepts for the, uh, parcels along Hooper and Simmons Street. Very preliminary, but one of the first steps is putting the property under common interest. As indicated in the map, you can see the titles on number of these properties were different parcels and different variation of the nonprofit's name. So the, uh, total sale price in, uh, for this, uh, is two hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred, uh, dollars. In addition, as I brought up, I'm asking the council to consider placing these monies in a trust account to be used for the restoration of the, uh... in a trust account to be used for the restoration of the Berg new roofs and exterior siding, siding. I am looking at some options for that Berg property, and I'd like to be in front of the city council in January. The Berg has been a real challenge for our Parks and Rec Department. We haven't been programming it in recent years. I'm concerned, I am, as well as Parks and Rec staff and facility staff, we are very much concerned about the exterior of a number of these buildings that need to be preserved. So we're trying to identify a possible use that could help offset future maintenance costs on these properties. So the immediate action tonight is to authorize the sale of the eight parcels identified in my communication, consisting of 4.42 acres, to the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation for $55,000 per acre for a total price of $243,100. And also to place these funds in a trust account for the benefit of the Berg. And again, any expenditures there would come back to council.
All right. Councilwoman Banks?
I just want to confirm, I think I know the answer. These properties are all owned by the city, and there are no homes on the property?
What's the last part? The ones with the X's on the on the large sheet?
No.
Are they vacant?
The vacant parcels on Simmons, there are no homes on those properties, and when the city presently owns them?
Anything that is highlighted in this map, they're all vacant homes. There are, they're vacant properties. There is no structures on any of these that are owned by the city. On one, on Hooper Street, there is a house that the Southfield Nonprofit owns that is currently being rented out. But all of the city-owned parcels are vacant parcels.
And then how many is it? How many parcels are there still people residing in homes there?
On Hooper Street, there is one parcel privately held. On Berg, there is one privately held. And on Simmons, there are four privately held.
Okay. So those are the ones that are not highlighted on this map?
Yes, those are still held. If there's no color on it, they're still privately held. The potential folk, the conceptual development would focus on that south property on Hooper abutting McDowell Towers and River Park Place properties the Southfield Nonprofit currently owns.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions? Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I just want to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the item, the sale of city-owned properties to the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Commission as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the sale of city-owned properties to the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I have just one other comment on that. The Southfield Nonprofit is in the process of changing its name to the Southfield Nonprofit Neighborhood Corporation. I anticipate that the name change has been approved by MISTDA. It has been submitted to LARA. I'm expecting that to happen sometime the first of the year.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I just want to commend the administration, and I like to do this whenever we can, for the creative financing of putting these funds in a trust account for the purposes of the Berg. So I think that's very creative, and it's a good use of of the funds that we are receiving.
Thank you.
All right.
And council, we have an additional item we are adding to our agenda under item J. And this is also before you, this is an amendment request for authorization that we approved back in October for the fire department, and I'll let the city administrator explain the rest.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item came to my attention Friday afternoon, conversation with the fire chief. The bid that was part of the city council's action on October 24th has expired, and MES, Michigan Equipment Supply, or Michigan Emergency Services, MES, out of Stanford, Michigan, increased the price by $1,050.32 for the for the one oxygen field station. I am requesting that city council increase the authorization by $1,052.32 for a revised figure from $745,127.44 to $746,177.76. We've made a recommendation, recommended resolution to that effect.
And council, if you look through the attachment, does have the email from the chief, as well as the original write-up from October 24th with the explanation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amendment request before us, authorizing to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus for the SCBA compressor field station and the one for the station for the fire department as presented here tonight.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the amendment request for the authorization to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus, one SCBA compressor fill station, and one oxygen fill station for the fire department as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our council portion. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. First, I would like to welcome our new council member at our next meeting. Congratulations, and we look forward to working with you. I'd also like to congratulate Allison on her appointment as acting city clerk. Look forward to working with you also. Just a reminder that the city of Southfield yard waste collection is extended until December 16th, 2022. So if you've got any more yard waste that needs to be put to the curb, you've got a few more days to do that. Also, I'd like to wish everyone a very happy holiday season and a safe and healthy new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes, I just want to really echo what Ms. Banks just said in terms of welcoming our newly-minted councilwoman to the to the desk, to the table here, or what was it? The desk?
Desk.
And and we really do look forward to it. I like I liked your comments today about coming in and just try to get to work with everybody and learn as much as you can, as soon as you can. So I can relate to your situation. That's how I got onto council initially. So, you know, thanks for sticking in there, and we look forward to working with you. And I got to say, God bless you, Allison. And we appreciate you for taking on this role for us. We really wanted the best of the best, and I think we we found it right. I was already here. So again, in in your phase retirement, we got you at your best time. So thank you all. And again, all right, happy holidays to everyone that's listening today, too. Hope everybody has a good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes. I will also welcome you, Ms. Hoag, and say thank you to you, Ms. Bass. But I also want to say, even though Mr. Hoskins is not here, I hope he's listening, that I have really enjoyed working with you. Congratulations on your move to the state. Don't be a stranger. Please come back and visit us, which I know you will, and keep your phone on, because we will be calling. It's been great working with you, and I wish you all the best. And anything that I personally can do, please reach out. You have all the numbers and ways to contact me. You will be missed. You're quiet, but you carry a big stick. When you say you're going to do something, it's it's done. So I appreciate that. So thank you for that. And in addition, I'd also like to wish everyone happy holidays. Enjoy your Christmas, your time off, your new year. This will be our last meeting, scheduled meeting for 2022. So I look forward to going into 2023 with each and every one of you. I wish you health and prosperity, and see you next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brightwell?
Obviously echo every word that's been mentioned, but I want to also mention that I welcome Ms. Coretta Hoag on board, and I've gotten to know her casually from over the years, just casually, but I think we have a very good new member there, and I think she will serve us well. And and I want to, I've also gotten to know Allison by way of the finance committee over these last few years. And I'm going to miss Allison, but I want to echo Mr. Cruz there, because you helped us out quite a bit on this, because we had, we had, we had a challenge with respect to filling that slot. And I'm a former deacon, so I'm just going to say, God bless you. So I definitely appreciate that you, you're on board with us, and I look forward to to this year, to the new year. And I just want to say happy holidays to to everyone within my, the sound of my voice, and also those who are electronically listening. And be safe and stay healthy and stay alive. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I too, I'll echo the comments of my colleagues. Welcome to our newest councilwoman, Coretta Hoag. I know that in a few short weeks, we've been communicating, and I know that you're, you've got a running start. So it's nice to know that you're very active already. And congratulations to our new, temporary city clerk. We appreciate you stepping up during this time, and we know that you're going to do a good job. We know that our city treasurer, we thank him for, for, you know, for bringing you on to the city all those years ago. So welcome and thank you. Just want to thank the Parks and Rec Department and the city for the wonderful tree lighting we had last week. It was a great event. And I want to wish all of our residents, my fellow elected officials, the all those city employees, a happy, healthy holiday season, and we're looking forward to great things in 2023. So thank you, everyone. And with that, we'll turn it over to the to the mayor.
Good evening once again. I would be very redundant, because I think it's all been said. We do appreciate Ms. Bass stepping up, but she knows that, as I've had a number of conversations with her. And thank you and congratulations to Ms. Hoag for joining us. You're not a stranger, as you've served on the SIRS board for seven, over seven years, and has been an active resident. I too would like to wish everybody a very joyous and happy holiday. And Mr. Hoskins is not here tonight because he's ill, and I'm sorry that our our last evening, we are not having his company but input, but he does send his thanks. And we have not seen the last of Jason, as we'll be working with him for the next, hopefully, six years as our state representative. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. City administration?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of myself and my entire management team, I want to first thank Councilman Jason Hoskins. He's been a delight to work with. He's challenged us many a times in phone conversations that pushed us all, but it was all in the service of helping and bettering the community, and we're grateful for that. We're excited about the opportunity to, working with him in his new role. I can't think of, it's been a long time since we've had this kind of excitement in Michigan where there's an alignment. The Democrats haven't controlled the House since the goodness, I think it was the mid 90s, and the Senate since the 80s. And, you know, so it's an exciting time with recovery dollars needing to be allocated and to get what our our needs are, and we have someone who understands that. I'll just simply point out that we have three state reps representing Southfield. All three of them have come from local county, city councils. So I think they'll have a solid understanding of what our needs are, and I'm grateful for that. I want to thank Allison for stepping up. She's been a delight to work with in her capacity. Her being a Southfield resident and her skill set, it really drives home the need that a city clerk, a city treasurer have certain skill sets that don't always exist in every community, and how fortunate we are to have her here. So I give my management teams excited about working with her in this new capacity. To Councilwoman Coretta Hoag, I too worked with her as with SIRS. She's been a delight to to work with, and my management team is excited about working with her as well as putting together a general orientation between now and hopefully the end of the year. We'll make that happen. It's the end of the year. We're moving into a very festive time. I want people to be sensible, be safe, think of others. What's most exciting, regardless of your faith, it's a season of light, and, you know, basic civility to each other. And that's something the world can always use a little bit more of. So I want people to stop, reflect, and I think as a community, how fortunate we are. And last week during our budget session, my staff members shared some of the things we've accomplished, roads, water sewers, in our parks, the outstanding work of our police and fire, what our building department does to keep us safe, what our public works department keep, does to keep streets functioning and and working. I want the city council, the mayor, and all the elected officials to know that we're grateful for the opportunity to serve this community. Happy holidays.
Thank you. City attorney?
Yes. So I want to welcome Allison as well as Councilwoman Hoag, and I know as Administrator Zorn said, it's the holiday season, so I just want to wish everybody have a safe and joyful holiday season and a happy new year, and I look forward to working with you all in 2023.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our city clerks.
I appreciate all the support. I appreciate all the encouragement and the belief that we're going to be successful.
Yes, I'm going to learn how to use that button. So my colleague, Ms. Humphries, our deputy city clerk, we are going to partner to be the successful team that we know we can be.
Thank you. Ms. Humphries?
Thank you. I want to thank Allison once again for stepping in in this role, and congratulations. And I want to congratulate our new council person, Ms. Hoag, on her new seat. And I just want to wish the residents of Southfield happy holidays. Stay safe, and I will see you in '23.
I just want to also commend you, Ms. Humphries, for for stepping up as the deputy. You've had some big shoes to fill, especially as we went into an election. So thank you very much for for your services as well.
Thank you.
All right. City treasurer?
Thank you very much. I just want to echo as well all the feelings that were said before. Definitely, we will miss Councilman Hoskins. We wish him well in Lansing. I work very closely with the legislative committees for the treasurers, as well as also the MML, and definitely having a person that knows our city politics and the MML, and definitely having a person that knows our city politics and knows our city very, very intuitively will be very beneficial for us. Between him and Senator Moss in Lansing will be tremendous assets, and we look forward with the Democratic majority in the House and Senate to hopefully bring home good legislation that we've been waiting to have passed for quite a while. So definitely wish him well. Definitely want to welcome our new councilwoman, Coretta Hoag, and I know her as well from interacting with her on the pension boards, and she brings a vast knowledge with her and a dedication for public service, so I'm sure she'll do very well for us. And last but foremost is definitely Allison, I know firsthand that her dedication to the city and her hard work has been stellar. And from the first minute I met her, interviewing her, I knew that she was a keeper. I knew she was a great person to have, and I'm happy to share her for the good of the city. But definitely, you know that you have your home in the treasurer's office still for you, and we value your work that you've done until now and in the future as well. So thank you very much. And thank you also for the deputy clerk, for all the service that she's done, filling in the entire time and single-handedly for the most part. And it was a big, big burden, I know, and I'm happy that at least you have an extra helping hand over there, and I wish you much success as well with that. As well as for our residents, just a public service announcement, we have mailed out our tax bills, for the winter tax bills. They were sent out beginning of December. They're due February 14th, so no need to rush to get them in by the end of the year. But there are people who want to have a tax deduction. They can do that as long as it's in our postmark by December 31st or in our Dropbox. By the time we get back, first day of business after beginning of January, then we will mark it as if it was paid for December 31st. And otherwise, the deadline is February 14th for them. And I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, happy and healthy new year for everyone, and should be much success and continued happiness for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, is there anything else to be brought this evening? All right, if not, this meeting is adjourned.